Um, everyone, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, my name is Henry Grito. I'm the executive director of District Council 37 in New York City, and I'm the co-chair of this commission along with Arva Rice. Um, I'd like to start by thanking Borough President Donovan Richards and the team here at Queens Borough Hall for being wonderful hosts to us this evening. The commission has been impaneled to conduct a thorough review of the city charter and craft proposals that will be put before the voters. This is our chance to create a better functioning city, one that is more transparent in its activities and more accountable to the people. It is an opportunity to make changes that will ensure that our city is less vulnerable to manipulation, corruption, or fraud. I know that all of my colleagues take this responsibility very seriously. While the commission was convened via local law passed by the city council, we are an independent body. It is our goal to hear from experts and everyday New Yorkers to propose substantial effective amendments to the charter. Any proposal regarding regardless of the merits that can be achieved by local law would likely not be up for our consideration. The commission will not be considering any proposals that weaken local democracy of New Yorkers' rights. A note on the process. You may be aware that we are not the only commission tasked with reviewing the charter. This commission is a distinct entity from the Charter Revision Commission that has been convened by the mayor. Both commissions are working simultaneously but separately. For our part, this commission will continue to hold hearings like this, like this one across the five boroughs, and issue reports to get public and expert feedback on our ideas over the next several months. I'd like to turn it over to my co-chair, Arva Rice, to say a few words.
Thank you, Henry. My name is Arva Rice, and I'm the president and CEO of the New York Urban League. I'm happy to be here at this third hearing of the commission. At each hearing, we have heard testimony that not only strengthens our call to increase transparency and accountability, but also strengthen our local democracy. We have unfortunately also seen our leaders at every level of government demonstrate exactly why we need to be concerned about those ideals. This is our opportunity to bolster New York City, to ensure that our foundational documents are protected and expand democracy and justice. I look forward to hearing today's testimony.
Thank you, Arva. Next, I'd like to ask the members of the commission to briefly introduce themselves, starting with um, our co-chair. I guess, uh, I'm sorry, to your right, Joan.
Just name, huh? Uh, Mark Winston Griffith.
Rahul Agarwal.
Alan Swisher.
Dr. Ram Raju.
Robert Brockley.
Matt Goalb.
Thank you. And I believe that that represents that we have a quorum. Also have some commissioners online. Um, would you kindly introduce yourself, starting with you, Manny?
Manny Bastreche.
Uh, Mike Restyoko.
Welcome, thank you. All right, so for the first order of business, we have the adoption of the minutes. Before we start the testimony, there are minutes corresponding for March 10th of this year, and they've been distributed to everyone. No commissioners could vote the across the board, but the vote of those who are online are not counted towards the quorum. Um, so, um, are there any questions about the minutes? In that case, can I hear a motion to adopt the minutes for March 10?
So moved.
Motion has been made, can I hear a second?
Second.
And motion has been made properly second, do we have? Okay. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objection? The ayes have it and so the order and the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Now we are going to hear testimony. Um, before we begin, I'd like to remind the members of the public that this is a formal government hearing or proceedings, and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. Uh, the witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. Video recording or photography is not allowed from the witness table. At tonight's hearing, we are going to ask folks to limit their testimony to three minutes in relations to uh, strengthening local democracy and improving government transparency and accountability through the revision of the city charter. Commissioners are encouraged to ask questions based on testimony given. Written testimony can be submitted to info@thecommission.nyc. I'll repeat that again, info@thecommission.nyc. Um, it can be any length and welcome up to 72 hours after this hearing. Um, I'd like to ask our first witness to come to the table, please introduce yourself. Um, and I believe the first witness is Councilmember Williamson. Okay. We have also been joined by Rachel Goodman. Rachel, are you here? Hi, welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Sure, I'm Rachel Goodman. I'm the chief of staff at the New York City Comptroller's Office and the comptroller's appointee to the commission. And I was stuck in traffic on the Belt Parkway, I apologize.
Welcome. Uh, you may begin, please introduce yourself.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. I am Natasha Williams, councilmember for the 27th Council District. And it is an honor to be here with you today, standing before a body of dedicated to ensuring that our democracy is strong, inclusive, and responsive to the needs of every New Yorker. Democracy is not a spectator sport. It thrives when people feel heard, when they know their voices matter, when the government works for them, not around them. That's why I'm here today to present two ideas that will move us toward a more transparent, efficient, and equitable city government. First, we must commit to making community engagement a fundamental pillar of public infrastructure projects. This is why I'm asking the commission to introduce the Present for Engagement Initiative. Similar to the longstanding Present for Art program, this charter revision would ensure that every major capital project, those exceeding $100 million in public investment, allocates a 1% portion of its funding to direct meaningful engagement with the communities affected. This charter revision would require the Civic Engagement Commission to create a citywide civic engagement plan, a data-driven approach to public participation. The CCEP would assess past civic engagement efforts and set minimum standards for future projects. The plan would establish project-specific engagement templates tailored to the demographics of affected areas, ensuring that outreach is both strategic and impactful. Additionally, the initiative would introduce measurable engagement metrics such as minimum thresholds for mail responses, social media interactions, and public meeting participation, ensuring that engagement efforts are not just symbolic but effective. The CEC would also be responsible for post-project evaluations through qualitative surveys to assess how well the community was informed and involved. And I'll just take a little segue to say, I'm currently working on a neighborhood plan, and I have had to personally buy food for members of the community to come and engage around this plan in the evening. And so if there was actually a budget set aside to really meaningfully engage with the community, I think our outreach efforts, especially on major projects, whether it's rezonings or infrastructure projects, would be much better. Oftentimes, agencies are struggling to do the bare minimum when they're reaching out to our communities. This is about trust. It is about giving people the knowledge and access they need to shape the future of their community. And when people trust the process, they trust their government. The second measure I bring before you is about ensuring that our city's commitment to equity is not just rhetorical but financial. That's where intro 1137 comes in. This bill would guarantee stable and sufficient funding for two critical agencies, the Equal Employment Practices Commission and the Commission on Civil and Human Rights. These bodies do the hard, often unseen work of ensuring fairness in the workplace and safeguarding the rights of New Yorkers. Currently, these agencies rely on unpredictable funding, which can limit their ability to conduct investigations, enforce anti-discrimination laws, and provide vital community outreach. This bill would change that by setting minimum funding thresholds. The Equal Employment Practices Commission would receive at least 0.01%, such a small margin, of the city's personnel services budget, ensuring it has the resources to oversee and enforce employment equity. The Commission on Civil and Human Rights would receive a budget equivalent to the licensing and enforcement allocations of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, giving it the financial backing necessary to hold businesses and institutions accountable for civil rights violations. These agencies are essential to protecting New Yorkers. Yet years of disinvestment have left them struggling to meet rising demands. At CCHR, staffing has dropped 73% since 2018, while hate crimes and discrimination inquiries have surged. Last year, CCHR resolved only 471 of 12,190 inquiries due to underfunding. At EEPC, with only nine staff members and minimal funding, EEPC cannot adequately ensure equal employment opportunities across 143 city agencies. If enacted immediately, this bill would double CCHR's budget to 30.8 million from 13.6 million, and almost triple EEPC's budget to 3.3 million from 1.2 million, providing resources to meet their missions. By tying their budgets to a percentage of the city's personnel service expenses and the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection's enforcement funding, we are ensuring that these agencies have the resources to do their job effectively. Equity is not a luxury, and civil rights enforcement should never be subject to political whims or budget shortfalls. What I am asking for today is simple. I am asking for a government that listens, a government that shows up for its people in their neighborhoods, in their workplaces, and in their everyday lives. I am asking for a democracy that doesn't just open its doors, but steps out onto the streets and says, we see you, we hear you, and we are working for you. We have an opportunity here to make this city a model for civic engagement and equity, to set a standard that says every New Yorker, no matter their zip code, no matter their background, has a right to be a part of this conversation. We cannot allow the growing tide of exclusion and regression to strip away the hard-fought protections that safeguard our most vulnerable communities. At a time when diversity and inclusion are being systematically dismantled across the country, New York must stand firm in its commitment to justice, opportunity, and human dignity. History will judge us by the choices we make today. Will we be the city that turns its back on progress? Or will we rise to the moment and defend the rights of all who call this city home? The answer must be clear. We choose justice, we choose equity, and we choose a future where every New Yorker can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Questions?
All right.
Almost got it right. So I have a question, if you don't mind. Um, so your second part of your testimony refers to an intro. And one of the things that we have to do in this commission is to figure out what belongs into a legislative body function and what belongs into, really as a question of the charter as an amendment. So the the second part of your testimony, is this an intro that you have yourself pursued at the council?
Yes, but pursuant to talking to various legal advisors, um, what I'm trying to do more than likely needs to happen through a charter amendment. So although I have a bill, um, it is very sort of difficult to do what I'm asking, which is change sort of the funding structure of this agency.
Okay. And my second question refers exactly to that. You said it was 0.1% of the total personnel budget, and you said it was a small amount? Personnel budget is 70 billion. 0.1%?
0.01.
0.01% is still 70 million. Is that what you're proposing? Okay. Just for the record.
It's just about considering the billion dollars you just mentioned.
Just doing the math, I just want to make sure we get them off right. So any other questions?
And that was 7 million for the particularly for the Commission on Human Rights, correct?
No, so I think that was for both of them, so cumulatively.
For both EEPC and the?
Yes. Actually, no, that was for EEPC. And then the Commission on Civil and Human Rights budget would be attuned similar to how the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection budget is. I don't have the percentage for that, but it would essentially follow the same methodology as that budget.
As a former commissioner for the EEPC, I wanted to thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I love the EEPC, and they never have money to do anything.
I believe there's another question.
Yeah, can I ask, so two questions related. One is, um, how did you arrive at those particular funding numbers? Like, why 0.01% and why make it equivalent to DCWP? And then the second is, you know, um, in the last few years, I think on almost every city agency it has probably had their budget cut. Um, and so, and I think you could also say that nearly every city agency, maybe everyone, serves a critically important function, you know, for the city. Um, so why is it that you're sort of singling out, um, CCHR and EEPC for this particular, you know, funding legislation? Um, and that's not to say that I disagree with you as to why they're critically important. I agree, I just don't understand why you would say only these two and none of the others. Um, and if it's none of the others, you know, well, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, so for your first question, um, for the 0.01% and then attuning CCHR's budget to DCWP is based off of a ton of conversations we had with advocates, um, a conversation that we had internally with the council's legislative division, the finance division, thinking about how the city currently, um, crafts their budget for similar-like agencies. DCWP does similar work at CCHR. Uh, sometimes they will find individuals if they are, you know, found guilty of a particular discriminatory act. Um, and so we were looking to find some form of precedence to what other entities do. So for EEPC, we tried to model it. Originally, the idea was to model it off of IBO, because the IBO has a similar type of metric that is kind of attuned to OMB. And so we were thinking about what equivalent agency would make sense for the respective agencies. And then in terms of why I mentioned these entities, I should have mentioned I'm the chair of the Civil and Human Rights Committee. So I'm always going to focus on the agencies that are within my purview. But I support, um, any funding metric that ensures that our independent agencies have the resources that they need. And I know Jeff Baker is gonna talk a lot about that in his testimony. And I do plan to submit written testimony where I will be a little bit more comprehensive on some ideas I have for various independent city agencies, whether it's, you know, Conflicts of Interest Board, um, and et cetera.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Um, I was, I wanted to ask about the first piece about civic engagement. I was, I was part of the 2018 Charter Revision Commission that brought into, or that proposed the the ballot question that then led to the establishment of the Civic Engagement Commission. And, uh, my sense is that it may not be as robust perhaps as we sort of imagined it could be. I was wondering, are you like, sort of broadly, what your perspective is or experiences are with that commission at any? And then sort of how you see, uh, what role it could play in effectuating that first proposal?
Yeah, I definitely think it is an untapped resource because they don't have the resources they need to do the comprehensive work of reaching the 8 million New Yorkers that live in New York City. So I definitely think they could be doing more if they had more. Um, and I do believe that's the most appropriate entity to help with this initiative. Um, a group of advocates actually came to me with the idea. Um, and I was like thrilled, I'm like, this is a great idea because oftentimes the community outreach component of major projects is an afterthought. Um, so, you know, requiring that there is money set aside in advance to ensure robust community engagement, I think is a really good way. So many times I hear, even right now, I didn't know this was happening. I hear that tons of times. Um, even though we've knocked on doors, we send mailers, you know, I paid for robocalls, my own money, to make sure people know about, and not council money, like my own personal money, um, to make sure that community members know about what was happening with the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. And to this day, and we've been doing this, um, for over the last two years. And to this day, I still meet people that say they didn't know about it. And if I'm being honest, the outreach could be better, it could be more. But we can only do what we have the capacity and resources to do. So I do think this is a good way, um, and that the CEC is a good agency to carry out the work.
Thank you. I really hope we can use that existing infrastructure in more robust ways like this. That was, thank you.
Any other questions, Joan?
How are you? Good to see you. Um, I love the idea of the civic engagement, uh, community outreach because having done many, many projects, you know, I will say communities of color are always the last to know, especially immigrants. And that is, you know, they are embedded throughout the city. And so while they might have innovative ideas and/or they definitely have ideas about what they want in their neighborhood, there was no outreach and there was no real language access to incorporate their feedback. So I really love this idea. And the other thing, today must be my, uh, CCHR day because I was at a meeting and ran into a former, a friend who was, uh, at CCHR. And I did not realize the percentage of staff who left. And, um, I know how important they are because during the height of everything, when it just felt like our city was imploding, um, they really did a great job holding it together. And I think oftentimes, a lot of our community members don't feel, necessarily feel comfortable going to law enforcement, or they feel like there's no recourse or, you know, a way to be heard. And so CCHR is always a natural entity for people to go and talk about what is happening. So I really love that idea. And I think, I did not real, I mean, this number just blows me away because, you know, during the height of anti-Asian violence, we worked so closely with them. And there was a lot of really robust outreach being done throughout the city. And I had been thinking, oh, they're a little quiet these days. And now more than ever, right, there is, continues to be anti-Asian hate. There continues to be, you know, violence, you know, attached Islamophobia, antisemitism. There's still LGBTQ, anti-blackness. Everything you can think of is happening now. And this is when we need them to weigh in. So I really love this idea and thank you for that.
Anyone else? All right, thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you. I'm like chuckling because I'm like, oh, this is how people feel when they come to our hearings. Thank you.
So next, uh, we have a testimony by Jeff Baker.
Good evening, Chair, Co-Chairs Grito and Rice and the other members of the commission to strengthen local democracy. My name is Jeffrey Baker, and I'm the deputy chief of staff for legislation and policy at the New York City Council. And I'm here on behalf of Speaker Adrian Adams to urge you to consider three reforms that will strengthen our democratic institutions and enhance transparency and accountability. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, the city council should have a greater role in confirming key appointments of cities commissioners. Um, you may be aware that the city council had previously adopted a law, it was introduction number 809, and it would expand the appointment of 20 commissioners, the advice and consent to the city council. Um, we hope that this charter will consider something similar, um, to that proposal. Um, these appointments shape agencies that impact millions of lives. And expanding the council's advice and consent powers ensures that these appointments are vetted for experience, independence, and commitment to public service, not just political loyalty. Advice and consent is a fundamental democratic safeguard, ensuring a balance between executive authority and legislative oversight. It exists at all levels of government to protect institutions from overreach and autocracy. Second, um, just to parrot what Councilmember Williams has previously testified to, um, I'm here to ask that the city's investigatory and oversight agencies, such as the Department of Investigation, the Civilian Complaint Review Board, the Conflicts of Interest Board, the Board of Corrections, and the Procurement Policy Board, should be strengthened and made more independent to shield them against improper influence. These are the entities that the city has that protect citizens from abuse, fraud, and, uh, general mismanagement of the city. Um, and they should not be undermined through budget cuts that limit their ability to function or by the arbitrary removals of commissioners and board members that mean that they cannot do their jobs. This commission should consider setting the budgets of these oversight agencies at a fixed percentage. I'm not gonna suggest what that percentage might be, but, uh, consider a fixed percentage based on the agencies or agency or agencies that they oversee, um, or in relation to the city's total population or the workforce, city's total workforce population, whatever is relevant to their work. This ensures that as the agency that they're overseeing grows and takes on additional responsibilities, that the oversight entity that is responsible for, um, managing them has the appropriate resources to continue to do their work. Um, similarly, if an agency is contracted, then those other, then their oversight agencies could also be contracted. So by setting it at a fixed percentage, we're not locking in any set guaranteed amount of money and it grows and contracts with the work that they do. This commission should also consider removal protections to protect against politically motivated firings. Um, this could include, there's a number of different things, uh, that this commission could consider. Um, for example, um, requiring city council approval for certain removals or instituting fixed, uh, terms of office for council member or for these board members or other commissioners, um, such that, uh, they only come up for appointments, um, at fixed intervals, and they're guaranteed their term of service. And on that, I would say similarly, the corp council, who a prior commission, uh, did put under the advice and consent of the city council, should also have removal protections, uh, to protect them against unjustified movements. Um, here again, it could be a fixed term, it could be having that removal approved by the city council or some other similar protection. If we're serious about rooting out corruption and abuse, we must guarantee that these oversight investigatory agencies have the independence they need to do their things. Finally, uh, the last proposal, we must establish greater accountability for the use and misuse of emergency powers. While emergency authority is necessary in times of crisis, recent years have demonstrated the risks of unchecked executive action. Whether through emergency contracts, prolonged law suspensions, or indefinite emergency declarations, or even self-inflicted crises, we must ensure that these extraordinary powers do not become routine. We need stronger guardrails, whether through legislative oversight, time limits, or independent review to prevent overreach while still allowing swift responses to true emergencies. These reforms are not about politics, they're about principles. They ensure that the government remains transparent, accountable, and responsive to the people, not just the office of the mayor. So I urge this commission to seize the opportunity to strengthen our charter and protect the integrity of our city's democracy. Happy to answer questions on any of these or anything else that pertains to working city.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any questions, Dr. Raju? Yeah, I actually, thank you. Um, you know, in 2019, there was a city charter revision that authorized the civilian complaint review board for the personnel to be 1.65% of the police department. And, um, the Office of Management and Budget has not allowed the CCRB to go forward with that requirement. We've heard testimony at the last hearing and hearings before that about other examples where funding has been appropriated by the council, by other actions, and OMB has not allowed it to go forward. And so I'd be curious to know what thoughts you may have about how the process or how this commission can consider a process where the budget structure does what it was intended to do, which is allow the powers of the purse, if you will. Allow the powers of the purse, if you will, and be to the council and the mayor's office.
So I think there's, there's two answers to that question. I think number one, by submitting these proposals to the people. And to make these decisions of how they would like to see these agencies be funded. I think that sings a very strong message to any administration. That the expectation from the people of New York City is that they get funded appropriately. I think number two, by considering provisions to strengthen the independence of these offices. And to strengthen the independence of the law department, which represents the city as a whole and not just the office of the mayor. That that would empower these offices to, if necessary, take legal action to make sure that they get the budget that they are legally obligated to get.
Okay, you, you also talked about the proposal of vice and consent that we've heard previously, testimony about the same. Suggestions and you talked about the agencies that was, were proposed. You mentioned the police department as one of those. Do you, and, and part of what has been, was discussed before is. The separation of powers between the mayor having the ability to appoint someone similar to what happens with. The chancellor, for instance, and the ability to continue to hold him accountable for. Positions that he may not have sole authority to, to appoint. How do you see that balance being implemented in a way that still holds the mayor accountable? And the council for that matter?
For clarity, I did not mention the police commissioner that may have been.
No, no, I said that was a testimony previously.
The bill that the council passed did not include the police, the commissioner of police. There were a couple of other positions that it did not include because of their relationship with state law. We did not, we have the authority to require advising consent over those positions. But to those positions that we did pass a law to extend advice and consent over. The appointment choice is still the mayor. There is the person who is, or the individual who's, who's setting forth a qualified person to be considered by the council. The council is just there to make sure that that person is qualified to do the work that they're being appointed to do. At the end of the day, it's still under the mayor's administration and the mayor still has to take responsibility for the administration of all the city agencies under his. Control, including the appointments of the persons he puts in charge. I know when the council passed its law, there was testimony by the mayor that. I think it was in eighteen forty four, the, the, the city alderman did have the power of advice and consent. And the governor, I believe it was Governor Cleveland at the time, removed that advice and consent. This is not eighteen forty four. That was Tammany Hall. It was actually a provision to deal with the corruption that existed in city government. That does not mean that that is a provision that really has any place in today's government where we have many other tools at our disposal. To crack down on corruption of city officials, not just to take power away from. And I think, you know, this is, advising consent is in the federalist papers, it exists at the federal level, the president's cabinet is advising consent. There are, I think, thousand plus offices in federal government that are advising consent. It exists at the state level. There are some offices at the city level exist, it exists in other municipalities. This is a bedrock principle to democratic.
Questions, commissioners?
Good evening. I, I have two questions. One is around advice and consent. And as we heard before. Last week, we heard arguments around why police commissioner should be subjected to, subject to. Advice and consent. And I, I asked the question then, well, why just the police commissioner? Why not a broader range of commissioners? And the response I got. Sorry. The response I got was, or at least my interpretation of the response. Was that when, first of all, the police commissioner is, has powers. And has a, there's a budget surrounding the police commission that is unlike any other position. And there was a very specific argument around it. And that, that enabled. The city council to make a very specific, well, it gave, it gave us the ability to make a very specific argument about a very specific position. And so while it does on some level deal with the balance of power. It's not so, it, it, it's much more precise. And whereas if you're talking about twenty or more positions. Then it becomes much more sort of about power writ large. And can become much more contentious and much more threatening to, to the mayor. I'm, I'm not here to argue one side or other, although I'm a big advice and consent fan. What is your argument for? Having so many commissioners be subject to advice and consent as opposed to making an argument. You know, periodically, where you are very precise about the importance of advice and consent for that particular position. As opposed to a wider swath.
Thank you for the question. I think. As, as previously mentioned, we, we did not, at the city council, when we were passing introduction nine oh eight. Include the police commissioner. There were, and, and a couple of other commissioners. There's actually over, I think, a hundred and twenty different commissioner positions that exist. At, at the city. We selected the twenty commissioner positions of the largest entities. That have the most interactions with the public because that is where we felt. Their impact would be most greatly felt by the citizens of New York City. I don't, you know, we, we could, we could, you know, provide testimony to break down exactly why we think each of the commissioners should be. Subjected to advice and consent. I happy, happy to, to, to work on filling out the records for that.
Okay. My, my second question is about. The emergency powers. That you want to put a, I wouldn't say put a check on, but just. Hold the mayor accountable. And you suggested that. I agree that there have been a lot of political motivations on many different levels of government that have abused and exploited emergency powers. So how in this situation, how in this case, would you ensure that in a true, true non-political emergency? That the safeguards you're putting in don't actually slow things and. And, and hinder the ability to respond in a, in an appropriate fashion.
Thank you for that question. First of all, absolutely, there is a place for emergency powers. No question. And the city and the state and the government and the federal government have faced emergencies over the last five years that absolutely warrant the exercise of. So I'm not suggesting that these. Emergency declarations that were made were done inappropriately or with malice. Where we, not in all cases, we do.
Right, right. No, I get, I got that.
But even where they were done, you know, I don't think anybody would, would question the emergency declaration around COVID. But the COVID declaration lasted over three years. Which, when you look at the provisions of Executive Law twenty four, it's clearly envisioning a scenario where. The normal apparatus of the government does not have the time to do the work it needs to do. In order to respond to the crisis. Therefore, it empowers the executive to take emergency actions. I think there is a pretty good argument that anytime that the other. Bodies of government can. Deliberate and take the actions that they have the authority to take. I think that's good evidence that the crisis portion of whatever you're dealing with, the emergency portion of it is probably. Passed or is passing. And the, the normal routine functions of government can now take. You know, obviously there were supply chain issues. There were, you know, you know, acquiring, you know, medical beds or for the asylum seeker crisis. Being able to cite shelters. That, you know, the suspension of certain zoning laws or other laws were required to do that. And, you know, I think that's an appropriate response. But once you get to a certain point and you can anticipate that, you know, this is how many we have today, we can anticipate that in six months, this is where we're gonna be. Why can't you then take those actions that are necessary today to meet the demand that you expect tomorrow? I think that's a management problem and not an emergency. So there are some limits to what I think this body or what the city council could do around curbing executive authority. But I do think having additional reporting requirements. Having oversight, having some independent review. Some, some standards or guardrails that would push back against. Just perpetually declaring emergencies and keeping them rolling for years and years. Currently, there are three emergencies that the city is facing. Right now, today. So one is a current, a, a continuing emergency that was inherited from de Blasio on the staffing of Rikers. Another one is the asylum seeker crisis, which Mayor Adams declared. And the third one is an emergency that the mayor claims was created by a democratic body passing a local law. Which we're currently in litigation against, but you know, those are the three emergencies that are, that are, that existed. But since, since two thousand and twenty, we've had the COVID emergency, Hurricane Ida. Baby formula and monkeypox on top of those.
I, I just have a quick question in regards to removal protections. I wanted you to talk a little bit more about what type of protections that you have in mind. And then also if they would, would they apply to the executive staff of the oversight agencies and or to the boards that govern them?
Thank you for the question. I, I don't think that we have any specific ideas in mind. I think different bodies probably would require different protections. Not every measure would be. You know, there's, it's no one size fits all approach. I think some of the, some independents might be just having. The guaranteed budget, might give them enough independence to do their job. They may not need removal protection. But for those that do. What can be considered would be, you know, for example, the Commissioner of Investigation. The commissioner was to be removed to have that be approved through the city council. Might be one idea that could be used. And it could be similar to, you know, how the city council handles veto overruns. If there is a veto. The council takes no action within thirty days, the veto stands. So if there was a removal and the council took no action within thirty days, the. Council took an action to stop the removal, then that would. Alternatively, I think there's other ideas that this body could consider, including, you know, setting a fixed. Period for the commissioner. So if commissioner's appointed, they get to serve. Two years, four years, whatever the appropriate number is. And probably, you know, having that staggered with the. The, the, the office of the mayor such that, you know, they'll have an appointment coming in within their first year.
Commissioner Regent.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I really enjoyed your suggestions. Couple of, couple of comments and questions. On the emergency power, right, the major concern, I am. Of the opinion that the mayor should have absolute power to deter emergency, which you agreed with. You are worried about how, how long it is and what is the reason for extending it. The major issue with this is emergency contracting mechanism. That is what is really making everybody very anxious about it. Rest of the things, I don't think people care as much as the contracting issues. So we can always say that the contract, any contract, emergency contract need to be reviewed within a certain period of time by the council. And, and basically then, somebody provides emergency contracting, but after ninety days or thirty days, whatever time it is. The council says, hey, this is not the right contract for us or it is not the beneficial, then that contract ends at that point. So instead of completely eradicating the entire emergency issue, we could probably look at it differently. And how do you want to do that? That's my first question, emergency. The concern and power, right? The problem with that is what is happening. I've been gone through this on multiple levels, since the federal government and also here, the city government. It is somehow this concern and advice turns into a test, litmus test for ideology of the. Of the, of the party, which is basically running the, the, the center of Congress or city council. So it is never really comes to the qualifications of competency issue. Always it boils down to what you said five years ago, what you did and what you wrote, where did it come from? So it kind of really dissuades a lot of very competent, qualified persons. Do not want to be put through this function. And also, from a mayor perspective, he or she wants to appoint the most competent, qualified person. There is open, her opinion to run that. So. How do I guarantee that this will not become an ideological litmus test? One. The number two is the timeliness. We are into the government third, fourth month still, the senate, the congress is still confirming people. So there are people without agency heads for the last, I don't know how many months. So these kind of things really a major problem, especially the city, where if the city council takes, let's say, three months to confirm somebody or even to bring them in. How do we guard against that? That's the second question. The third one you talked about is either the, the defined term limits. As well as inability of the mayor not to fire people. Is the downside of that is what happens if the agency head after six months found to be totally incompetent? So he, then the problem is then he or she will continue for four more years or three more years. What is the criteria for that to do that? The second thing will be the mayor, if you really want your boss doesn't like you or has a problem with you. Then just holding on to the position doesn't really mean that you are really doing a good job. Because having been in that position before, I can tell you, because they can make your life difficult in multiple different ways. And you could still have the title, but you are so ineffective in what you do. At that point, people say, wait a minute, let me go, you know, it's not worth it. So all three areas, I agree with you, but all the areas have got some downside which you need to carefully consider.
Thank you for the questions. I agree, there is no silver bullet that's going to fix all the problems. Either with mayor's executive action or with protecting these bodies' independence. I think these are things, these are important questions for this body to consider. I don't think, again, there's, there's also no right answer for every single body. I think there's probably a mix of different tools that should be considered and applied where the circumstances warrant it. I, you know. I just want. You asked a lot of questions. I, I, I can try to answer them all, but I just, one that really stuck out to me is, you know, the contracting issue that you brought up. I do agree, the contracting issue is very important. A lot of people are very concerned about how money was spent during the emergency process and whether those, those. Contracts were well negotiated and the city was getting the value that it should have gotten for those contracts. I don't mean to suggest that the city council is the appropriate body for reviewing those contracts. It may or may not be. But I, I, I do think having some additional guardrails around having those contracts just. Being written for whatever the, the executive wants at the time, does need to be reviewed. But beyond that, I would also say that there is a larger problem with just. These sort of rolling executive action and emergency action, anytime there is an emergency executive order, the mayor is authorized to suspend laws. That a democratic institution enacted. And if the mayor has the power to just suspend laws or even threaten to suspend laws as this emergency continues to go on, it has cut. Out a democratic institution from the policymaking. Necessary to, to deal with just the normal functioning of, of city government. Now, if you're in the first few weeks of a crisis, fine. Um, you know, legislative body is not going to respond that quickly anyway. But when you're six months in and the legislative body says this is what the policy of the city should be, why should the mayor be able to arbitrarily decide that they don't need to adhere to that democratic process?
I agree with you. That's why I said we should not really get away from not declaring emergency. But once it declared, somebody has to take a look at it, the reason, continuation of that, as well as a contracting, what comes with that? So I completely agree with you. And the second issue is where the investigative, investigatory body heads need to be protected. I, I, that I agree, but that you don't want to be, you know, put them in, in a, in a, in a, in a crosshair when they're investigating somebody and they're being dismissed. Those two points, I completely agree with you, but I just wanted to make sure that instead of addressing the emergency powers itself, we can put in some mechanisms to guard them. So they go off the guardrails as opposed to just attacking the emergency power itself.
Yeah, I agree completely.
Wait, on this way? Hang on. Yes, good.
Um, just really narrowly on the issue of, uh, emergency contracts. As it stands currently, the controller has to approve a, uh, suspension of the normal procurement rules during an emergency and can, um, un, I can unauthorized that at any point, even if the mayor hasn't declared the emergency over. So we are no longer, the controller's office is no longer accepting emergency contracts for the asylum seekers, even though that emergency is still in effect. So you could imagine something similar in other kinds of ways. Um, and the controller's office does still receive the emergency contracts. There's less that we can do at that point, but it's not just so folks know it's not like there's no oversight of the contract. Once it's been entered into, it basically just means that the contract can start before we look at it rather than that we never look at it. So there may be, I actually think that, not to, you know, thwart the powers of the controller's office. I actually think that the contracting part of emergency procurement is, is actually probably covered. And that maybe that could be a model to use for some other elements of emergency declarations.
My question.
Sorry.
Sure, sorry. So I'll say that, you know, I've made a career out of always responding to crisis. And so this question might be like, you know, everybody might be like, how do you not know that? But is there a clear pro, I mean, I think COVID is a perfect example of having to declare emergency, right? But other than something like that where it was, it was a global crisis, is there a clear, is there some kind of guideline or some outline of what is considered emergency? Because I think I share what some of the things you're saying, what everybody else is saying is like, anything could be an emergency, right? Like, that's what worries me and I'm, I don't, is there something written down? Like, you know, I, I'm kind of a check, checklist kind of person and not that we need to have that, right? But is there something that is some type of protocol that we look at? Um, the other thing is, um, with emergency spending, is there some? You know, the more I think about this, the more I'm having a hard time articulating because I'm so confounded by this. But how, what is a transparency process? I think I appreciate that the controller has to look at it. But during a crisis, what is the transparency reporting process about how money is spent on behalf of the city? Um, because I look at like something like asylum seeker crisis, right? All I kept hearing was, oh, my God, the Fed owes us two billion dollars. Oh, my God, the Fed owes us everything, right? I, is there some process of like having to report out? Because what the problem becomes then is a, it's the general public seems to, what I, what I am very angry and frustrated about to be personally, um, is that there was a crisis with the asylum seekers, obviously, but the anger, there was a lot of different factors, but of the budget and why, how things were handled, but all the anger got directed towards them to be, you're the reason why our cities, whatever, right? And I thought if we had a better process, more transparency in reporting how his money is being spent. I'm not saying like you have to list every personnel, right? But getting a figure, because I never saw anything. I just got these big numbers in the news. And so then it becomes this media nightmare and like random talking points of this is a problem and they're the enemy. And so I'm wondering what safeguards do we put in place to make sure that there is transparency and that we need to call an emergency a true emergency versus hair on fire, house on fire?
Right. Thank you for the questions. Uh, to respond to the contracts, I, I mean, contracts are registered and they are made available online. So people can examine at least the top lines, how much money is being spent and to whom.
We do an annual report and we did a sub annual report on the asylum seeker. I don't know that finding these on the controller's website exactly counts as transparency, but we do do it and you can find those numbers if you look hard.
Right. I think here the problem, obviously, the, the mayor needs flexibility to be able to do procurement and emergencies. Um, and to do that procurement quickly means that certain procurement rules have to be suspended. Um, I think here probably what I would suggest is, you know, additional scrutiny as, as a, as a crisis drags on. You know, the first few weeks, okay, you need to do what you need to do. But as a crisis drags on into months and years, you know, a very serious look has to be given towards, you know, how that money is continuing to be spent when you're no longer following the normal procurement rules. Like, why is it, you know, once it goes on for months, why can you no longer, why can you still not follow procurement? If you can anticipate, we're going to have this amount of population in six months, why can't you go through the process to get what you need in six months? I think that's the, that's the fundamental question.
Uh, hold on. This side, we should just.
Thanks so much for your testimony. I just want to follow up on a couple of, of things. The first, we, we heard a lot last week from IBO and others about units of appropriation. So in specifically in your testimony, but I feel it's resonant with some of the themes you, you raise. Um, in particular, you know, we heard testimony from IBO that the units of appropriation for certain agencies are just too big and that there's an issue relating to transparency as far as the council's uh, ability to exercise meaningful participation in the budget process as a result. Do, do you have a, a view or the speaker's office have a view on this? Um, in particular, I'm sort of wondering if this is a problem, what the right solution is, we heard kind of a range of possibilities.
Right. Thank you for the question. Um, it is already my, my division is not the finance division. I do understand that they will be testifying at a future hearing, so they'll probably have a much more robust answer to this question. But, uh, I believe it is already a requirement under the charter that the units of appropriation be broken down by project for every agency. Um, that is not a practice that is currently followed. The num, the number of units of appropriation that the council has been able to get has increased over the years, but it's part of the budget negotiation process to get greater and greater transparency, um, with every budget that's passed. Um, so I absolutely agree with the position that it is necessary um, to understand what the city is spending its money on and for the, for the council to do its job effectively.
Thanks. So, uh, when, I hope, when they testify, I'll, I'll, um, thank you. And so the other area I wanted to explore is, and you, you, you hinted at this a, a little bit, is sort of uh, a, a failure to implement local laws by the administration, which um, seems to be potentially an issue. And, and that was raised in, in testimony last week, I think in Manhattan. Um, so I was wondering, like, you know, from your perspective, in your role where you oversee the legislation and, and more at the council, but, you know, is this an issue? And if so, do you have a sense of what a mechanism could be, um, to sort of force implementation, so to speak, or, or is it just that there needs to be litigation?
Um, thank you for the question. I think I, I think there's always going to be circumstances where the administration and the city council don't see eye to eye on implementation. Um, whether, whether a bill that is enacted is legal or whether it is being and that, whether it is being implemented in a way that is compliant with them. So I think there's always going to be that sort of tension. Um, I think that gets resolved in a lot of different ways, including just, you know, uh, communication between staff members, um, oversight hearings, that's just part of the normal functioning of government. We're, we're talking about the very serious, um, clear violations or what would appear to be clear violations of the law that was enacted. Yes, in those, in some cases, litigation is appropriate. I think, however, having an independent, uh, law department would be very helpful in having them independently be able to make a determination of what they think the law is. And, and that, and, and the city council might be on the losing side of, of that. But the, the, but those answers are not going to be politically motivated or based on who the mayor is, you know, or isn't. Um, that they're going to make an independent judgment as to what the law should be and whether or not a law can be legally followed or not. And they're going to give that advice to agencies. There, you know, during the, during the bill drafting and negotiation process, they will also give that advice to us. Um, and it will be part of the bigger conversation. So I do think having independence at the law department would help solve some of those.
And then, thank you. And then my last one is we, the commission's been talking a lot and, and your testimony hit really squarely on sort of, um, these balance of powers issues and, and one, and one thing I haven't heard and I'm sort of wondering whether this is something we can, we should consider. And something I actually heard, um, at a, a forum for, with people who are running for comptroller was for certain, uh, boards, like the, the procurement policy board in particular, whether the, the, the actual composition of the board itself should be changed. So, um, you know, the, the term protections aside, and sort of all these things aside, whether we ought to look at certain boards not having necessarily a mayoral majority. I, I appreciate that there may be legal issues. Um, but do you have a view or the speaker's office on, on those kinds of changes?
Um, no, I think that that is certainly for certain boards. Um, that could be an appropriate tool to ensure a diversity of opinion and that a board is representing the people, um, more than just a particular administration.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I, I'm going to push back a little bit because there's some questions. One thing is to have a bill that the mayor may not like, that he has a right to veto and the council has a right to override. And then the mayor instructing agency commissioners not to implement. And, and I go back to the issue about O M B, not funding. I mean, the city, the, the provision about the CCRB was actually enacted by a will of the voters. And it's not being implemented. This is a two thousand and nineteen commission, similar to the one we're sitting on, right? So begs the question, we come up with ideas, we propose them, assuming the vote, the voting public, right, approves them. And then the mayor, whoever that person may be, decides not to implement it because they don't like the provision. You see, so, and my question, I guess, goes back to why isn't the council uh, calling the commissioner and testifying and grilling them about that very same thing?
Well, I, again, the fin, the finance division, not my division, so I don't handle the money questions specifically. But, uh, holding, you know, that part, part of making sure that laws are effectively enforced is partially the responsibility of the city council.
Okay, that's fair. And just for clarification, the unit of appropriation had to do specifically with the police department. Where all of the police officers, lieutenants, detectives are in the one U of A, U A L. That doesn't allow to discern how many of them are in which neighborhood boroughs or otherwise, which renders it to be like the, more than a quarter of the entire budget for the entire police department is one unit of appropriation and doesn't allow the granular utilization by neighborhood. That's the reference that was made by IBO in her testimony in Manhattan. Okay, Commissioner.
Mr. Baker, thanks. Um, uh, I have a few questions. Um, I, I'll be sort of very candid upfront, um, and I may be in the minority here. But, you know, I, I disagree very much with most of what you said, um, and I sort of just want to put that on the table. Um, let me sort of start with the politically motivated firings. Um, you know, I think one, uh, one proposal you made was that, um, the, the ma, the chief executive, uh, were he to decide to terminate, he or she to terminate, um, somebody in one of those positions, one proposal would be that the termination would only be effective, um, if the city council approved it. Um, so I've heard of your other proposals, in other words, staggered terms, that, that's something that happens and makes some sense. Um, you know, I've, I've heard of, um, ensuring that, you know, terms go from one chief executive to another. Um, certainly there's terminations for cause. Um, I have never heard of this idea that the city council could effectively veto, um, you know, the, the right to terminate an employee. So I'm just sort of wondering, are you aware of that provision anywhere else? You know, whether it be state, federal or other local governments that, that the actual legislative body can say, no, thanks. We reject your, 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 your termination.
Not off the top of my head, but, uh, we, I can work to fill out the record.
I'd be curious to see whether anybody else has tried that, you know, that method. On the, uh, on the emergency powers, I, I certainly understand the need, um, to think through whether we should modify, um, to the extent we can, and I think there's limits to what this body can do with respect to emergency powers, you know, given that they're governed by state law. Um, but I certainly understand, um, you know, the inclination to talk through emergency powers, um, and, and sort of how and whether and when they're utilized. Um, I guess my, my sort of reaction to your, um, you know, your comment is, it, it, it sort of seems to me like you are, um, after the fact, reevaluating the emergency to sort of talk about when, uh, the legislative body was ready to act. Um, and so, you know, yeah, chief executives are in the middle of an emergency and are, and are sort of reacting in the moment. Um, you know, and, and it sort of very much seems to me like you're saying, hey, listen, at this point in the emergency, the city council was ready, uh, and, and, and so therefore, right, this chief executive should have said, sorry, no longer, no emergency necessary. I'm just not sure that's the way it plays out in real life. Um, and so I wonder if there's sort of a, a real like impracticality to what you said. Um, you know, noting obviously, and I, and I sort of, again, I, I note that I very much understand the need to reevaluate, you know, the emergency, you know, mechanism. Um, I, I, I think it's very helpful that, you know, Commissioner Goodman outlined what the comptroller does. And I think there have been proposals to have the comptroller sort of, you know, reengage every few months on the actual proclamation or declaration. That, that makes a lot of sense. I just sort of wonder, and, and I didn't hear a lot of specificity from you on the actual, right, emergency powers. But I, I do want to say, you know, sort of to the other commissioners on the board, I mean, executive law twenty-four does actually spell out what you need to declare an emergency. And it can't just be that you just declare an emergency and it happens. Um, you know, it, it not only spells out the circumstances under which you can declare an emergency, it also spells out what you can do once you declare the emergency. In other words, the laws that you suspend aren't just, hey, I don't like the law, therefore I'm suspending it. The laws that you suspend have to be narrowly tailored to the actual emergency that you're declaring. That this issue has been litigated all over the place. Um, and, you know, lawyers at the law department know it and lawyers at city council know it. So I, I sort of hear what you're saying, but I got to say, I, I very much disagree with, you know, the, the manner in which you've said it. Um, and I do want to make sure that I'm making sort of that point clear. And I understand that I have not yet asked a question on emergency powers, but, you know, I, I, I did want to say that. Um, advising consent, um, here's my question on advising consent. Here's what you said. You said that the city council would quote, and this was in response to a question, that they would, uh, the mayor would do the appointment and then the, the council would evaluate whether the appointee was, quote, qualified to do the work that they are appointed to do. So qualified to do the work that they were appointed to do. And so, listen, my sort of job here in this question is not to try to pick a fight, okay? But I'm just going to tell you this. Um, there are a number of people who watched the last city council hearing, um, when they took on the nomination of Randy Mastrow to be, uh, corporation counsel. Um, many of those folks who watched that hearing would not, would not claim that the city council did, that it opined on whether Mr. Master was, quote, qualified to the, to do the work that, you know, he's appointed to do. And my question to you is, you know, don't you run the risk, the real risk? As that hearing, I think, demonstrated that when you that when you, when you impose advice and consent on 20 plus agency heads, you're going to turn into the, to the United States senate. In other words, this is going to be purely a political football. And it's going to be something that can be used to delay, um, to, uh, you know, to, 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 to reject people that the council doesn't like, to play politics. Isn't that something that you, you want to avoid? And if so, how do you avoid it when you're asking, you know, to, to basically expand this power to another 20 agency heads?
Thank you for the question. Um, I think with respect to the appointment of Mr. Mastro, what maybe missed in the question was that Mastro also, or the corp council also represents the city council and other agencies not under the mayor. So the appropriateness question or qualification question is a little bit different in that circumstance.
Okay, I, I, so, I mean, I don't agree, but my, but, but what's, what's your answer to my question about how you avoid politics?
I mean, everything is politics, but you know, the, the, the there's, there've been a, you know, hundreds of appointments that have been done at the city council, um, that have been approved. The bill that was passed by the council nine oh eight had time limits such that the council would not have the ability to drag on appointment for months. They either would have to act or the appointment would go through. I think that's appropriate. I don't think that the city council, um, should be able to hold up an appointment, um, by dragging its feet. Um, I think that everybody recognizes that these commissioners have to do the work of the people and they need to be on the job as quickly as possible. And I think the council has taken seriously the appointment power that it does already have and, um, has approved, you know, almost every single appointment that has been put before it and done so in a timely manner. So, uh, you know, I, I, I don't think it would be in the interest of the city council to turn it into a political theater.
And, and, and just to be clear, I mean, right now you have appointment power over three people, right? The C C O I B head, the D O I head and the corporation council.
Um, there are a number of boards that the council has appointment or advising consent.
Okay, but on, on the sort of agency head list, I, I think what you're proposing is to expand it from the three that I've mentioned to approximately like 20 plus. Is that right?
Well, the, the bill that the council passed expanded it to 12.
Yeah, I mean, you're here in support of that bill.
The council passed it. It is a validly enacted law. And will, will when, when, when it's not being bumped from a ballot, will be considered by the, the voters of the election.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, you're asking for advice and consent and the expansion of that. Are you saying that we should expand it to all of the agency heads that are listed in that bill?
Uh, I think that would be appropriate. Sure.
I can go on, but I, 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 I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We have other testimony, um, including testimony that we're going to hear virtually on Zoom. The first, uh, testimony on Zoom is from Iraq Chahonsky from the Queens Borough President's Office.
Hello, everyone.
Iraq, how are you?
Good, good. Thank you so much. Thank you, co-chairs and to the rest of commissioners for the opportunity to testify before this charter revision commission. My name is Iraq Chahonsky, uh, budget director for the Queens Borough President Donovan Richards, Jr. Today, we'd like to speak about section 102, paragraph B of the New York City Charter, which addresses the expense allocations available to the borough presidents in the city's budgetary process. Specifically, it gives us the formula for how funding is dispersed to each borough president's office. This formula is the average of each borough's share of the city's population, each borough's share of the population living below 125% of the poverty line and each borough's share of the city's total land area. In its current state, the formula does not allow for an equitable distribution of funding across the city. The formula does not take into consideration the sharp population growth that Queens has experienced in recent years, nor does it take into consideration the current economic impacts of that growth on renters or homeowners. Even though Queens continues to be the fastest growing borough, borough in terms of population and housing, and that Queens is the largest borough by land area, our expense funding per capita is continuously the lowest in the city. This is further exacerbated by the approximately 50,000 asylum seekers who have been under our care here in the world's borough. While we are proud to open our arms to those seeking to build a life in Queens, the influx of new arrivals only furthers the need for more equitable formula. For example, in the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget, the Queens population was over 2.4 million, but received a mere $2.20 per person in expense funding. In comparison, Manhattan received $3.55 per person in expense funding, despite having nearly 800,000 fewer residents. Meanwhile, Staten Island received $9.54 per person in expense funding, despite having nearly 2 million fewer residents than Queens. All of these means that Queens residents receive much less in overall investment than residents of all the boroughs, an injustice that must be rectified. The expense funding formula is clearly outdated and inefficient. If we are to ensure that every New York City resident gets their fair share of funding, the formula must be updated. One example, the formula could include the forecast of creation of school seats projected by the school construction authority five-year capital plan. This element will allow the city to factor in the population growth already expected by the administration and will allow to reach population who may not be receiving any government benefits and therefore not considering any other population metrics. I urge the charter revision commission to look into this matter and ensure the legal text of our city adheres to take into consideration the current socioeconomic reality we live in. I thank you for the time and commitment to work together in addressing this and other pressing matters to better serve the communities we represent in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Yeah, I actually heard. Um, I think my question is related to the powers between what would be this commission's power, what would be in our purview, and that would it falls to then stay law. Uh, whether it's through foundation A, which is now currently being discussed as we speak in the state legislature, or whether it's the appointment through the authorities of the school construction authority that you suggested. So, um, I don't necessarily believe that what you're suggesting is within our scope. I want to be very clear, but I want to hear your opinion on that. Because when it comes to funding here, um, the city particularly for the schools, the neighborhoods, the areas were very confined and the state law supersedes all of that. So, can you, uh, comment on that?
Yeah, I, I will start by saying that this is just one example, uh, you know, because it's actively, it presents an active plan of, uh, that really takes into consideration where the overcrowding is already happening and the growth. We also, I also acknowledge that, you know, there's other, uh, as per the charter itself, it, it does acknowledge that this has to be done through local law to be explored, uh, and the formula matter. However, we don't want to leave any stone unturned, um, to try to serve our, uh, 2.4 million residents. And, yeah, yeah, uh, I understand the position in this. However, the administration in the city does participate in the development plan of, of, of the cities. Um, so it's our intention to, 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 to keep it.
And you do know that the foundation A, one of the factors is population, as you have suggested. That is already in the current formula. Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We now have the second testimony on Zoom. Anna Humphrey from the Center for Independence of the Disabled. Showman.
Hello, I'm here. Can you see me?
Okay. We can hear. Please start your testimony.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony today on proposed changes to the New York City Charter. My name is Anna Humphrey and I am the transportation and voting community organizer at the Center for Independence of the Disabled New York. As the commission evaluates potential revisions to the New York City Charter, we urge you to prioritize the following reforms to strengthen local democracy and ensure full inclusion of people with disabilities in city governance. The New York City Charter should ensure accessibility by explicitly requiring that all public hearings, participatory budget sessions and community board meetings be fully accessible. This includes providing American Sign Language interpretation, live captioning and accessible digital participation options by default, not just upon request. The charter should expand disability representation in city government. We recommend amending the charter to require a disability advisory committee to provide guidance on accessibility and equity across all agencies. Additionally, there should be dedicated seats for people with disabilities on major decision-making bodies, including the N Y C Planning Commission and Civic Engagement Commission. Proposed changes to the charter should be provided to the public in plain language and well enough in advance to allow for public comment. The information provided should be accurate and accessible to ensure that voters are well informed and can participate in the process. As the city works to strengthen local democracy, it's critical that people with disabilities are not only included but centered in the conversation. We urge the commission to incorporate these reforms into the N Y C Charter and ensure that accessibility and equity remain at the forefront of city governance. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey. Are there any questions?
Uh, good evening. Um, just wondering, and I'm, I'm a little reluctant to ask the question because I don't, I, I feel a little bit shy about trying to assign any kind of dollar value to full accessibility. But I'm just curious, do you have a sense of what the budget implications of, of that would be?
Um, so specifically for the accessibility of A S L interpretation at, um, public facing hearings and budget, budget sessions and things of that nature. Those are, and, I mean, it would depend on which, um, A S L agency or interpretation agency, whether it's A S L or any other language, could be up to a couple of thousand dollars, but it's also usually an hourly rate and that would be per session. I didn't fully do the math, you know, on how many hearings there are per year and things like that, but, um, it would be a pretty small amount in the grand scheme.
Thank you. I have a question. So as, as a, I guess, a former architecture student, understanding that many of these municipal buildings who are beautiful are very, very old. And sometimes accessibility is beyond just a money issue, but it could be a structural issue. It could be and a, uh, something beyond the idea of getting it and retrofitting it. Do you believe the technology that we're using today, like the one you're using to testify, could be a tool to provide accessibility with their buildings that, uh, for a variety of reasons cannot be physically fitted into accessible for people to physically participate?
Yeah, well, our first recommendation always would be to try as best as you can to ensure that whatever building these public hearings are, um, taking place at are accessible because I know there, there are, you know, options and also temporary accessibility options for certain buildings, such as temporary ramps and things of that nature. However, um, Zoom is pretty accessible. It's, um, screen reader accessible. So if the chat is being utilized, people that are blind or low vision that use screen readers can usually access the chat, which is great. It does have live captioning. Um, however, CART is sometimes an essential service for people who can't see the small text that Zoom uses. Um, and then it is a, also a good option for A S L interpretation that's over Zoom. You can easily spotlight one of the participants so that the A S L interpretation is always up on the screen. So, yeah, overall, I would say that Zoom is a, is a great option, especially because some people with disabilities just prefer to stay at home if they have transportation, um, obstacles or things like that.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you for your testimony today, Ms. Humphrey.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to hear testimony from Osandi Garcia, who's also on Zoom virtual.
Thank you so much. Um, are you able to hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Hi. Um, thank you so much for, um, holding these, um, uh, these forums. I truly appreciate all the hard work. Um, I know it's been quite a feat for, uh, you guys to be able to hear the challenging situations that, um, New York cities are currently experiencing. Um, I'm currently testifying to, um, plead, uh, for the most vulnerable, uh, for our immigrants. I know that as a commission, as commissioners, uh, your responsibility is to look over the rules to make sure that the protocol is implemented. Um, so please take a look at the current administration. Not only as US commissioners, but everyone that is actually tuned in listening. Pay attention to the fact that, um, the same very people that support and uplift this city that have made Queens such a thriving culture hub, uh, a transportation hub, a, a, a place where people really truly can sit down and be themselves and be in community. That is what we're supporting. That is the investment that was made during the pandemic, during this emergency cycle. The investment that was made is not being taken away from New Yorkers' pockets. And I understand the challenges that homeowners are facing in, in Queens. You know, I, I canvassed, I spoke with so many of y'all. And I understand the concerns. I understand your fears. I understand your love and your devotion to the constitution. Now, as, you know, in the NRA, uh, I had a few guns pointed at me up there. A lot of respect to the NRA, um, to the members, not the institution. Anyway, um, Queens is, is in crisis. New York City as a whole is in crisis. So I am pleading for you to not only consider the budget, to consider the impact that this budget will have on immigrants that, you know, that this charter has on the people that came here with a dream. You know, if we're going to continue using the tagline, you know, New York is where dreams are made of. Let's actually give people an opportunity to create their dreams. And let's stop villainizing them for simply existing and attempting to create this very same dream that we sold them once upon a time. I believe this. I still believe in it. I still believe in our city. I still believe in what we can do. And I know we have the capability to do that. We have the administration. We have the people. We have the drive and the desire. And we most definitely have the culture and we most definitely had the, the budget to be able to make it safe. And we can't continue to do that unless we actually acknowledge the impact that policies and, you know, negative speeches that this current administration has been using, the impact that it has had in our communities. Like there's, there's an individual who was currently in court today after being stabbed repeatedly by someone who hated him because he was an immigrant because he spoke Spanish. That is the reality that a lot of people are facing. So it's not just, is someone, you know, is someone fit for the job? It's someone willing to do the job. Are the, they have the capabilities, the desire to be able to do the job. And as a city, are we able to provide them support to be able to do that? I truly believe that we can. So thank you so much for taking the time to hear me today. And thank you so much for all the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Thank you for your testimony. I could tell you that as an immigrant myself, I feel the passion in your words and, and echo some of them. However, I could tell you that there are limitations as to what this commission can do. Um, some of the federal policies that have been implemented right here in New York is one of those limitations. And so, but in terms of advocacy and other things, I not only hear, but agree with you on the vilification of many of the people who came to this country as immigrants who have contributed to the society in so many different ways. Uh, any questions by any of the commissioners?
Um, may I make a
Sure.
Thank you. Um, while I understand the limitations that this commission has, um, I still hold a standard that, um, that we um, I still hold a standard that, um, that we as a sanctuary city, as a city charter, the pillars of what actually made the city so successful and to be able to actually create this nation as it is, um, we need to be able to uphold that. So it is extremely important for any individual who is in a leadership position at this time, who has power and is able to actually implement and actually hold the line for the individuals who are in danger because of haphazard policies and mood swings by an administration that isn't taking into consideration the large impacts that these reforms could have. I am simply asking the commission to consider the fact that we are still a sanctuary city, that we are still New York City. And however, this federal administration wants to handle it, New York City still has the power to handle local New York City issues. So please, as a New Yorker, not just an immigrant, as commissioners, as every, I don't know who's in the room, but every single one of you that's in that room, you have the power to be able to actually make sure that our people don't die in the streets from hunger, from not being able to access a bathroom, from not being able to access education, from not being able to actually access their family because they've been thrown in jail. Where maybe possibly they could die because I don't know if the commission has had the opportunity to take a look at what's going on in Rikers. Because the city council went to Rikers. And they hid the fact that someone passed away the day before they actually went. So please, that is all I ask of this commission. To remember where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Have there any other questions? All right. Thank you for your testimony.
Appreciate you.
It's now, it's now six fifty. We do not have anyone, um, who have signed up to testify, but we do have some announcements to make. I want to remind everyone that the next hearings are scheduled for Thursday, March twentieth at the College of Staten Island. And following that, there will be a hearing on Monday, March twenty fourth at Lehman College. All the hearings sound from five to seven P M. And folks are invited to testify either in person or via Zoom. Uh, registrations and further details on all hearings are on our website at W W W dot the commission dot N Y C. W W W dot the commission dot N Y C. Um, with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. I want to thank everybody for coming. And for those who testified online and virtually, do we get a motion to adjourn, please?
Chair, just one question.
Sure.
On, on Thursday, that our meeting conflicts with the borough president instead of the borough address at the same time, and Staten Island.
Instead.
Yes, yeah. So just want to on the Bronx, yeah, okay. So just want to let you know in case if I miss the meeting, that may be because I interrupted the borough president.
Okay. I appreciate duly noted, duly noted. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Can we get a second? A motion has been made and properly seconded. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? The ayes have it, and so order we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.